Good evening. It is 7:02 PM and it looks like we have a quorum, but we'll take a roll call shortly. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole for August 24th, 2022, to order. And our first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Start with roll call.
Alder Allen is absent with excuse. Alder, a rat-a-fra-da?
Here.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Maldonado? Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udel?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Next order of business is item four, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the July 27th, 2022 draft minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Discussion. Did I hear a second? I'm sorry.
I'll second.
You have a second from Alder Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, place the motion before us to a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item, public appearances for non-agenda items. I have no registered residents within chambers or on Zoom. We will move on to item six, our agenda items. First item, agenda item is 6A, Police Department Update in Policing in the 21st Century. And we have with us this evening Chief Morales. Chief, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you for having us here. I see that the mic is working. I'm going to stand up as I enjoy this presentation. First want to start off by thanking Mayor. Thank you for having me here and presenting to you and the council. I really appreciate the time for us to be able to explain to you what's going on with policing in Pittsburgh and policing throughout our nation. Council, Police and Fire Commission, you're out there in the audience. I want to thank you for taking time out of your day to come out and watch this presentation. It's greatly appreciated. And the public, for you residents of the city of Pittsburgh, I can't thank you enough for coming out here to see what's going on with your police department, the Pittsburgh Police Department. Thank you very much. First want to thank, when we start thanking people from the police department, members from our Pittsburgh Police Department, I want to thank Deputy Chief Matt Leahy. Deputy Chief Matt Leahy helped in the hiring process. I have a little bit under a year under my belt with this police department, and he has been very true to the organization in supporting me as an outsider coming into the department, and not only that, but being very honest with me. He's very good at being honest, and sometimes that honest isn't good feedback. So I like that, and I thank you for doing that. It's, again, we're part of a team. We want to hear the honest truth. We don't need to hear something that's not real. There was two others that helped with this presentation and have been spending a lot of time in this, with this organization and helping it move forward when we talk about the managed gerial leadership here for the city of Pittsburgh. And that's Ned Hardwick, who's out at training at Command College. He could not be here, but he did help with the presentation. And Lisa Heitman, who's in back here also as part of the group here, the audience. Thank you very much for helping with this presentation. I'm the first one that to tell you, when I come within a group and talk, I never feel like I'm the smartest person in the room. If you like this presentation, thank the team for helping. Thank the Pittsburgh Police Department for putting this presentation together. If it's bad, blame me because I'm reading it. So that's how it works. I'll take the credit if it's bad. They take the credit if it's good. If you notice, there are several members of the Pittsburgh Police Department that are here today. All right? I want to thank them. My first summer here at Pittsburgh, we've been below staffing all summer long, and you have reported for duty, did your job, and did it as watching the body cam video that I see of you with smiles on your face, with enthusiasm, with appreciation for your job and showing that to the public. You don't know how far that goes when you come to work with a positive attitude. When you come to work and you show that to the city of Pittsburgh resident and businesses. Did an awesome job this summer, and I thank you for that. Keep up the great work. You've done phenomenal work. I've been getting the recognition, but you're the one that's doing the work, and I thank you for that. Thank you. In addition to that, we brought back post-COVID, we brought interns back as a way to promote the image for people to want to join the police department. We brought in one from UW, and she has been a charm. Grace Belsen, can you stand up for us? Done an awesome job. Thank you very much. That's come with a lot of positive feedback from UW system. My first part, my first partner here and connecting with the UW system, connecting with them, hoping that this program continues to grow. This is a way how you funnel people into a profession like policing. Okay. Before I start the slides, I want to talk about three letters that police chiefs get when they come into the organization. They're left by the prior chief. And the first letter, they said, do not open these letters until there's a time of crisis. So the first letter, if you read it in the first time of crisis, you open that letter, you're supposed to blame the prior chief. Anything that goes wrong, I have a trump card that says, I'm going to blame former Chief Chad Brecklin for this problem. All right? The second letter, under a time of crisis, is to blame myself. All right? That's when I have to take ownership of this organization. And the third time of crisis is to start writing three new letters for the next person. I can tell you, I'm not going to do that. In fact, I'm going to thank not only you, City Administrator, for what you've done to this Pittsburgh Police Department, what I've seen of it, but also the prior chief, Tom Blotter. You have done an awesome job for the city of Pittsburgh and what I have learned in the last 10, 11 months with very, very finite resources. It's amazing to see what you all have done because you are, and you'll see in this presentation, how you are understaffed and the things that you've accomplished are amazing. So that thanks goes to the leadership, and that's you and the prior chief. So thank you very much for that. I'm going to have some talking points, and I ask if there's questions from the audience, commissioners, mayor, the Alders, that you wait till the end. I have a presentation with a lot of information that I want to get through and then allow the end of the presentation for any questions that you might have. So. What is policing in the 21st century? It's, policing requires a ton of data. It's using a community, problem-oriented approach in dealing with issues. It's connecting with real-time crime information and having a pulse on that real-time crime where you can deploy resources quickly to threats that come in and out of our boundaries. I'll give an example of what real-time crime information is in data is our thoroughfares. Every county, every city is connected by a major highway. Dane County has two highways that come through, I-90, I-94. We're at direct connection to Milwaukee, to Rockford, to Chicago, to Minneapolis. And although those thoroughfares are meant for travel, for business, for personnel, for leisure, the bad element, the crime element uses those. In today's policing, we have to be able to communicate through different levels of law enforcement to have a pulse on what comes and goes through our cities. Something that's fresh in your mind, 4th of July, Highland Park, Illinois. We all know, if you weren't aware, that that killer was in Dane County, wasn't too far from our city. That information needs to flow quickly because that could have easily happened in your community. It's important that we operate in 21st century where we have a pulse for that type of information. These real-time crime centers that you should know were established after 9/11 because law enforcement did not communicate, local, state, and federal, and even our military information that's pertinent to our homeland. We did not communicate well. These places have been, they've been strategically set throughout our nation, and we have those information sources. Sometimes the information flows well, good, and sometimes not so good. But I'll talk about what's going on in policing which affects us all, and that's going to be staffing. In addition to that, I'm going to read one piece, and then we'll continue with the slides. Policing, there's a person that we call in policing, Sir Robert Peel. He has nine principles. He's the founder of London's Police Force in 1829. There's nine principles that hold true to today's policing standards. I'll read four that I want you to keep in the back of your head as I go through this presentation. All right? I don't like to take my glasses on and off, so I'll try to read the quote and then I'll interpret it and how I see that quote. The first one is to prevent crime and disorder as an alternative to their repression by military force and severity of legal punishment. In other words, one of the primary focuses of law enforcement is to prevent or reduce crime, fear, and disorder. That's it. That's our main job. Number two, it's a little lengthy. To seek and preserve public favor, not by pandering to public opinion, but by constantly demonstrating absolute impartial service to law in complete independence of policy and without regard to the justice or injustice of the substance of individual laws, by ready offering of individual service and friendship to all members of the public without regard to their wealth or social standing, by ready exercise of courtesy and friendly good humor, and by ready offering of individual sacrifice in protecting and preserving life. We're impartial regardless of your opinions or wealth or economic status, education status. We serve you. All right? The third one is, we maintain at all times a relationship with the public that gives reality to the historic tradition that the police are the public and that the public are the police. The police being only members of the public who are paid to give full-time attention to duties which are incumbent on every citizen in the interest of community, welfare, and existence. The police are the community, and you, the community, are the police. And lastly, I like this one. To recognize always that the best, or the test of police efficiency is the absence of crime and disorder and not the visible evidence of police action in dealing with them. In other words, the best measure of crime is measuring what doesn't happen. That's extremely important because that's later going to reflect when there's an ask for increase in police services. If you specifically look at crime, well, that's one of our purposes, is to keep it from happening. So we're going to start off by looking at Pittsburgh at a glance. Okay? This, this is pretty self-explanatory. We're at 33,000 residents, and I may be corrected by council or the mayor, but it looks like city of Pittsburgh's growing at about 700, 750 residents a year. The one that's growing faster than Pittsburgh in Dane County is Sun Prairie, and they're closer to around 1,000 per year. The suburbs of most cities in our nation are fastly growing. This holds true throughout our nation. Milwaukee shall grow, Washoe County is growing quickly outside of Milwaukee County. The suburbs outside of Chicago are fastly growing. New York City, a number of people moving out of New York City to the suburbs. This is not something that's unique to Dane County or the state of Wisconsin. You have to understand, we have 35 square miles of area to patrol, 150 miles of roadway. That's important when we talk about crashes, which is also something that's common in our city and others. Three school districts, and we border Madison. Here's a quick glance at 2021 crime numbers. I won't talk too much about crime numbers in this presentation, but I know our Alders, our commissioners, our mayor, city administrator, you all get a monthly report. This is more for public, and I believe we do have a public interface for crime numbers where you, as a community, can log on to our website and find some of these numbers. The next one. Here are some of our calls for service. The tough thing about calls for service is COVID really put a hamper on every profession and just life as a whole. 2020 and 2021 were pretty different from the other numbers. What we're going to be doing when we compare ourselves is 2019 and moving forward. A lot of police services were dropped. We didn't want to have much contact with the public, community services, things of that nature. We, just for the prevention of the spread of COVID, there was a number of things that were done to reduce that, and hence, we weren't really doing much police work other than handling our calls for service. And that was per mandates that were beyond anyone's control in this room. Okay. I want you to look at this piece. This is authorized staffing for your Pittsburgh Police Department. Understand that the command executive staff has not been updated since 2013. So you're looking at numbers here that have been a constant, and I think there's only been growth, very little growth in the sergeant position by a single-digit number or by a couple of numbers. Detective, by what, one? And here's where we try to fill, but I'm going to show you how just filling in the officer position is not always the right thing to do in an organization. Next one. Okay. Here is one thing that we have to look. As a city grows, the services of policing are going to grow in one form or another. We have to grow proportionate or somewhat proportionate to the city. The city is growing. We've already mentioned that. We're currently at around 33,000 residents. The national average, and that comes from three different data sources, the national average per thousand is roughly around 2.1 to 2.5 sworn per thousand. If we're at 33,000, you can easily do the math of what that ratio would show, and currently, I'll show you in the next slide, don't go there yet, where we are compared to cities our size in Wisconsin and compared to our partnering cities. You should know that Pittsburgh, another thing that was already established here, and it's a great idea, Pittsburgh partners with four other cities, Verona, Manona, Sun Prairie, and Middleton. We partner together in a number of different things from training. We share one analyst, and I'll talk about that analyst later. And we also support one another in several things. We work as a team. So you will see that that group, those five cities, the MPSIS, the average number of sworn for some of our partnering agencies is even higher than Pittsburgh's. The national average, 2.1. Midwest average, 1.8. And I will tell you, and I'm going to share with you a quick story. It's an easy read. It's Austin Police Department. They made, they tried to make a deal with the city. They went out to the city and said, you follow the national push. We only ask for two officers per thousand, and we will promise to spend 35% of our personnel resources on community policing. I like that 35% of community, of police resource on community policing. They did a big push. They did not get the city voted against it, but Austin is doing some great things, seeking funding through grants and other things where they're still very successful in building their organization up to where it needs to be. But at the end of the day, the research that it takes for that national average, I'll just throw some things now that you're going to see in the later slide, are calls for service, crime rate. Academia hasn't really talked much about the length of time it takes a police officer to handle a call in the 21st century versus 30 years ago. 30 years ago, if I got sent to a call that any police department knows quite too often, domestic violence, this was my powerful tool. I'd get a statement from one party, get a statement from another party, determine probable cause, make an arrest, and where I came from, we'd stack those arrests, so I wouldn't come in till there were maybe three arrests, and in an hour and a half, a paragraph and a half handwritten report per arrest, and I was out the door. An hour and a half of work on three arrests. One arrest in that same domestic issue, multiple hours on what it takes to document, preserve evidence, go through digital evidence to complete that same job from 30 years ago versus today. This was my tool. Now, that's the tool of your current police officer. And that's what has to be taken into consideration when you look at what it takes for the amount of sworn to handle real-time police situations. Okay. The next one is going to show our numbers with municipalities that are considered mid-sized cities in the state of Wisconsin. We're talking about right now, mid-sized cities, 30,000 to 50,000 residents, and where we are in the percentage per sworn versus population, and we are second from a nominee false. To go up a hundredth of a percent, that's one officer per thousand. And the national average is 2.1 to 2.5. Doesn't mean you have to be at 2.1 or 2.5. That's just something that you have to consider when you're looking at what, you know, what you should be looking at for average sworn. I'm going to look at duties, what our staffing is to fulfill a basic day in the city of Pittsburgh, and that's what's hurting us right now. Next slide. Are you, we're at department highlights? What is that? Okay. Okay. Budget, budget allocation. Here's the tough piece, and this is the hard piece. If I were, if I were council manager, here's a tough pill to swallow, so I'm not here to point fingers. This is a tough pill to swallow when we're talking about being stewards of taxpayer money. You want resources or financial resources to go to police, but 86% of your resource, of that budget, goes to personnel. 14% goes to operations of, you know, of a department. This is Pittsburgh's numbers. That's pretty consistent with departments at the, at the national level. Mid-sized cities in the nation are about 2,033 out of 18,000 law enforcement agencies in our nation. So when you look at this, this is just a budget allocation for the police department. But when you look at the budget of what public safety is for the police in the entire budget of the city, I think we're in about 30% or somewhere a little over 30%. They've gone up in other cities, up to 45% of the city's budget goes into public safety. That's what scares everybody. If I were, again, the leader of the city, I got to look at it both ways. There's money that, you know, you got to allocate money to other areas, not just law enforcement. It's, it's a difficult, difficult balance and a hard decision that we as a community and we as a council have to weigh when we're thinking, how are we going to budget this? It's not easy. Here are some of the department highlights that I want to, I want to show, and we'll go on to some because some of those highlights have impacted me before I even came here. City of Pittsburgh does an awesome job at department wellness, peer support. They also are part of the state leader program, law enforcement death-related group. And there was a large team of Pittsburgh sworn that responded to Milwaukee when I was a leader there and lost three officers in the line of duty in 10 months. You don't know how important that was, and that comes to thank to the leadership in this city that allowed sworn, including Deputy Chief Leahy, who reported to Milwaukee and helped as a part of a group of leaders throughout the state of Wisconsin to help city of Milwaukee out. That's, that's never been done. It was the first time that a deployment like that was done in the state of Wisconsin in the history, and it was well received. Moving forward, here's what we want to put our resources in. Here's what we want to put steroids on, our community outreach. If you heard Sir Robert Peel, we have to be a piece of the community. And if we're going to do that, we have to invest here. We can't, there's, it's endless of why we want to spend those resources in community outreach. If we want your support, we don't need it when things are good. We're going to need it when that negative incident happens nationally, not in your city, not in our city, not in our department, but it's still negatively reflected because we watch the news and we think that all departments are like that. So if we become closer to you, what I would expect if I were you saying, I see that's a sad story that happened in whatever city, whatever state, but that's not my city of Pittsburgh. That's not my police department. That's what we invest in, and that's what we need because your support, going back to mental health, is our mental health to know that you're on our side, you support us. It's our job to make sure we keep that relationship with you. As a city department grows, these assignments grow. We need more help in investigations. We need more help in the neighborhood officers. You heard me talk about that. Part of the community policing is having, being visible on bicycles. Domestic violence is a constant in any community. Economic status does not prevent domestic violence, and that's a constant. That outreach, the ability to see who are the repeaters in there and find a way to help to reduce that call or prevent a homicide is extremely important. Technology with drone, field training officers, the turnover, coming to a department, a mid-sized department, I thought, heck, we're not going to have to deal with hiring and firing. We're not going to have to deal with training and retraining. I've gone through three hiring practices, and I don't even have a year on the department yet, and we're still understaffed. We haven't been able to fill the staffing levels. And that's not unique to Pittsburgh. That's the constant in policing around our state and our nation. Here's one thing that we all, as a city, whether it's you as our leadership, our council, our mayor, our city administrator, you as a community, this is a slide to be very, very proud of. When you see that national narrative, that police are all to, that the police are, that our bad use of forces up, these numbers, that's the average right there. That's your use of force in one year with the context to the public in 2021. And we're probably going to that same number this year in 2022 or less, and that's 1.2% of our contact. That's an amazing number. I've listened to body cam. I watched the body cam. I've seen the level of restraint that the sworn have here in the department. It's been amazing. That's one thing that we can all be proud of. That is, when I look at this and those numbers, it's not shooting, it's not excessive, it's taking somebody down to the ground and handcuffing them. It's the use of taser deployment. I think we used a beanbag on one of those six incidents last year. That is what it is. Nothing anywhere near excessive. That's an amazing number to keep, especially during 20 and 2021 where there was a lot of negative backlash towards law enforcement. Here are our operational challenges that we're moving towards. We can do the next one. Meeting with citizens and expectations. The time it takes in one assignment in the last 30 years has evolved where we spend a lot of time on one call. The time it takes in one assignment in the last thirty years has evolved, where we spend a lot of time on one call. When you see, and this is not in every city, when you see a squad parked off the road, I've had comments called saying, why isn't officers sitting there doing nothing? They're most often are documenting a report in their squad car, showing visibility and still trying to maintain, uh, you know, uh, expectations to make it to the next call. They're not just sitting there, uh, reading, uh, something on Facebook or going through text messages. They're documenting their last call. And not, you know, it's a perception. We see a squad parked, we see two squads parked, no, they're not doing anything. Or part of it is, maybe it's just simply doing, uh, visibility for traffic issues that are going on there. Or it's, uh, you know, meeting with local business. I pushed our members to say, on your downtime, part of community, uh, community policing is getting out of your squad car and engaging. Engaging with the public during good times. Not engaging with the public when we need to because something bad has happened, because we've already lost that narrative. It's engaging when things are good. Doing that and, and spending the, uh, doing these calls, it can get very challenging. Here are additional, uh, challenges when we, uh, look at reporting. Our information, as you see, I talked about being data-driven. We have, uh, digital evidence, surveillance video, cellphone. Just for you all who live in a closer residential neighborhood, how many of you have Ring cameras? How many, uh, businesses, there's not a business near you that doesn't have security cameras? Uh, what does that mean to the police officer? A simple call or even a report that says, I was robbed. We have to verify if that person was robbed. What's the next step? Review video. Now, if you have two blocks of Ring cameras, you have several businesses with security cameras, imagine how time-consuming that one statement is going to take, that one call, that one statement. We just had one over the weekend. I could tell you a person reported robbery through video, we can tell you it didn't happen or not happened the way that person said it, but how many hours you think were spent verifying that? Uh, it wasn't hours, it's days of, of going back, going through video, pulling video, meeting the owners of some of the businesses, talking to the residents, trying to get a hold of Ring camera. That's the reality, is the length of time for one call, one statement. Trends that happen that you are aware, in, in these trans property crimes in, in, in a community like Fitchburg, they're going to come and they're going to go, and that's dependent. Usually, these are very few people that are committing a larger number of these incidents. But it's still trends that we're having, currently having, and things that we have to spend resources. We want to do community work, but we also have to do police work. Consumption of time that it takes to do interview and interrogations, uh, go through some of the technological, uh, challenges that we have, it can be very time-consuming. I'm going to share with you another piece. Violent and gun crime. We can say not much violent and gun crime happens in Fitchburg, as it shouldn't happen. But I could tell you, on average, we've been recovering on average a gun a week. Now, let me just tell you what one gun does. One shot's fired. We were not using, and that's no fault to the leadership here, it's more the county, we were not using our data systems properly. There is a National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, NIBENS. For over ten years, several law enforcement agencies, they come in contact with a casing, a bullet, a gun, that gets entered into NIBENS. NIBENS is a national tool. It's like fingerprinting, uh, a, a fingerprint system for guns. Once that, any of that pertaining to that one weapon gets entered into that system, you can connect the dots. We're averaging, we are currently averaging a forty to fifty percent hit rate on the guns that we're entering, connected to homicides in Chicago, shootings in Milwaukee, shootings in Madison and other jurisdictions. As you heard me tell you earlier, we're connected with the highways. There's nothing you're going to do to prevent, uh, people from coming and going. But we do have systems in place. They're time-consuming, labor-intensive, but we do have systems that help us connect the dots. And once we connect the dots, that's when the work begins, putting that case together. I could tell you, NIBENS has basically pulled one detective offline to continuously deal with, uh, these, uh, guns and casings that we're putting on evidence. And thank God, knock on wood, nobody's been hit this year, and we hope to keep it that way. We can continue to address the problem with what's already been done. And we have several guns on inventory that as we catch up, we can pull to continue to address the problem. I can tell you with my twenty-eight years now of law enforcement experience, when I say fear, there's not much to fear because it's a few people. A few people that account for the problem. Systems like this help us deal with the few people and not go after everybody in a neighborhood. And that's how we hope to continue. Here's another need. The police facility. It's been discussed, we've discussed it. I'm the new person coming in. I understand we haven't had a, we haven't been above the first floor in a police department since we've had a police department. And only the historians or those that have been here long enough can tell us that. But we haven't had a police department. Outside looking in, I have to be honest. Do we want a police department? Are we, are we, because of this perception in twenty twenty, are we, do we not want to say we got a police department? Because I'm proud of this department and I've only been here ten months. This is a great organization. It's okay to say we have a Fitchburg Police Department. There's nothing wrong with that. It's okay to be proud of the department that's serving you. There's nothing wrong with that. It's time we have a police department. It's time we have a police department that's open to the community. I am big on that. There's a number of ideas where you can make this police department very community-centric. The ideas are endless. But on top of that, square footage alone does not build a police department according to training and standards. It doesn't. A police department has to have a temporary holding facility. Arrests are made. And that has to be according to state standards. Okay, built according to the state standards if you're doing a new one. Interviews, both, uh, you know, both soft interviews and hard interviews. Soft interview, sexual assault complaint. You have to have a soft room to interview somebody to make them at least feel somewhat comfortable to tell you what happened. And then the hard interview, when we do have people that are combative, to be able to talk to them. And the electronics that go in those rooms to record these interviews. How about evidence? How complicated is evidence? Evidence is extremely complicated. The tracking of evidence, the packaging of evidence. If it has DNA, blood, soil, uh, or they're soiled, you have to dry them before you package them. How about drugs? You touch fentanyl, gets in your system, you can die. Places have to be ventilated, they have to be cleaned. Systems in place, it's not just office space. Communications, my voice has to carry in a room like this. But if I'm in a communications dispatch room, my voice can't carry because the next dispatcher has to be able to communicate with someone on the phone or someone on the radio. So you have to build that in a way where there's no voice that's going to bounce off the walls or the ceiling. The type of, uh, of, uh, technology that goes into these buildings is amazing. It's not just square footage when you think about a police, uh, facility, a police station. Here's the problem as well. I came on, I, 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 I started looking and entering in policing in nineteen ninety-two. I applied at over a dozen police departments, local, state and federal. I was in the hundreds, and in certain places, I was in the thousands. There were years to wait. On average, a year and a half to get, and that was speed, that was quick, a year and a half to get on the police department. This is your applications, your applicants in twenty twenty-two. Again, three hiring processes, and we can't fill our vacancies. And that's not just in the sworn part, in the civilian side as well. We've had multiple processes and come up with zero. That is consistent with, uh, the nation as far as any other employment. Everybody's struggling in hiring, recruiting and retention, so is policing. And, uh, it's very tough to, to hire, uh, people that meet the, the, the requirements to become a police officer. One last thing I want to say about the recruitment piece is even if you, if you hire, here's the problem. I was told by this, by a famous Secret Service agent, Larry Boondorf. He retired from the Secret Service in nineteen ninety-two. Larry Boondorf was also the one who jumped on Squiggy Fromm when she tried to shoot President Ford. And he said, you're getting into law enforcement, you'll make okay money, you're not going to make a lot of money, but you're worth more money, money at the end of your career than you are at the beginning. And that's from experience. So recruit, that's just the start of building a good cop. It's not the end-all. Having the bodies, it takes time. In any position that you start, I've always said, spend a year there just to get comfortable. There's so much to learn in this profession. So much to learn that by the time you start getting the hang of it, you're already in the end of it. So that's important to know on what it takes to become a police officer. All right, I, I showed this, uh, I showed this, uh, staffing piece earlier. I want to also show you a quick scenario as it plays out. So I just wanted to put this back in your brain so you see the staffing levels. And then we're going to talk a little bit about a, a scenario that we're going to run through. Okay. With that staffing level, if we have vacations, which we all want, let's talk work-life balance. We have family leave because most often policing is a young person's, uh, job. So that's the time when you have a family. So that means family leave. I want to spend at least the first two weeks with my newborn. That means, uh, I'm sick. I maybe get sick as well because I have to take care of the child. Or there is a, uh, community night out or national night out or a community event, so I have to pull. So on the streets, we end up with, this is your minimum staffing level for your city of Fitchburg on any given day. Go to the next slide. Four officers and one sergeant. And I have to say, if that sergeant is out on the street in that yellow spot right there, that sergeant is doing a great job because that sergeant also has administrative reports to file. They have inspections on squads, they have to, uh, do, uh, training reports that they have to funnel through our administrative side. Uh, payroll issues, staffing, uh, uh, for the lineups for the next days, calling people in to fill some spots. So if they could get out of the street, and then reading the current crime, crime trends to be able to, otherwise I'm going to get on their butts for not knowing what crime it is. Now they gotta get out on the streets. So that sergeant is pretty efficient, that sergeant got out on the streets. Now you have four squads patrolling, that looks good. Okay, let's have the next slide. Here's a disturbance call on one corner of the city. And that disturbance is, uh, two people fighting, uh, a crowd, uh, standing around the two people that are fighting. In our apartment, some of our apartment complexes, that's not a call that you, that's a, a call that you would get sent to. That's, I'm not making it up. So you get sent to your disturbance call, that's a two-person call. And a sergeant's probably going to go up there to make sure that we're communicating properly, that we're trying to de-escalate, that we're, we're, we're doing, we're, we're following our, our protocol. So now we got the other two squads, they're patrolling at least another side of the city. Okay, that's good. Let's, uh, do another call. Oh, a combine just, uh, got in an accident with a, a, uh, a teenager that's going on the south end over on M, uh, Double M, and now we have to go investigate that accident. Not unheard of, right? We're talking about combines coming out of the cornfields, and now we have that accident. So that's that one officer. Now, the last officer that's available may have to go help with traffic on Double M. Right? That's a decision we have to make and that sergeant has to make. But in this case, we're going to send the sergeant, have the sergeant get that other one because the crowd is getting bigger over there for that argument, fight. So now, I'm the bad guy. I'm thinking, I'm going to go over to this side of town and commit a robbery because there's no squads covering the rest of the city. And that happens on a regular basis, not the robberies. Thank the Lord, hope they don't happen. But as far as where your squads are at, that happens regularly on a minimum staffing day. That's, uh, the Fitchburg Police Department taking care of a call that is pretty common. Here's another piece that, um, I had to, Deputy Chief Leahy had to kind of hit me in the chest with. We had, and this doesn't happen too often, but we had a shooting at a tavern on the west end. Uh, that was, uh, the west end of the city, off of McKee. It was at a tavern. Tavern had double-digit people at the scene. Remember, if it was fifteen, twenty people, but that's not uncommon to find at a tavern, right? Uh, a few dozen people, shooting occurs. That's what you have for staffing. Who's going to separate the witnesses? Who's going to go out to the hospital? Who, uh, how many supervisors do you have if there's only one working? And if you have three supervisors assigned per shift with off days, you're lucky if you can get two, most often one, and they have to call mutual aid. To have mutual aid to separate that crowd, mutual aid alone isn't going to be enough to separate that group. Those are real-life scenarios that we're not ready to handle yet. From the tavern shooting at one in the morning to the, uh, the fight at an apartment complex. Those are reality. And those are things we have to consider when we put these. As we grow, grow staffing numbers for management and supervision, that's also where we have to put it. Because it's also a risk management piece. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. Here's our current organizational chart. And, uh, I have to say that this chart is outdated as we speak today. As the city grows, the city grows needing more resources of the police department. As the police department grows and as police departments in Dane County grow, like our, our partners that we spoke about, the, the Sun Prairies, the Middletons, the Verona-Minona, they, their services increase, which oftentimes when I ask, who do we call to do a search warrant for us? Well, we call Dane County sheriffs. Who would he call if we have a person with mental health issues in the house with a weapon that we need to take in custody? Who's going to help with negotiation with Dane County does that? Well, if the cities continue to grow like they are, the suburbs, then that one place doesn't have the resources to give to us, which means we have to become more self-sufficient. And if we have to become more self-sufficient, pre-planning, uh, and, and pre-planning to, I'm talking within five or ten years, this organizational chart is going to have to change. We have to adjust the command levels. There hasn't been a command level adjustment since twenty thirteen. And we have to adjust and add spaces for who's going to handle our risk management. Who's going to handle our accreditation? Who's going to handle the inspections for the accreditation? Who's going to do our early intervention programs when we identify, uh, some deficiencies in a member? Who's going to help identify that plan? There's a lot that goes in to simply that piece where, who are we going to give that, who are we going to give that responsibility to on that chart? And I forgot one other piece. Public information and social media. That in itself is a full-time job. And what I mean by that is we have to be transparent. We have to control the narrative. We have to control the narrative. We have to use it to target harden. Many offices, departments have a full-time public information officer. Let's give an example that's whole, that's fresh in some of our minds. We have six or eight cars broken into overnight. Next door app says, we had 50 cars broken into. They're all over the place and I had this and that done and, and oh my God, the sky's fallen. Somebody may say, but there were actually six to eight. How do we communicate back to that large group of people that received that message on the app? That's controlling the narrative, showing the facts. How do we do that if we have nobody constantly looking at the social media to help communicate? I am of a breed that doesn't use social media. I'm an older generation. The younger generation communicates with the phone in front of them. How do we communicate to that generation if we still not ready to communicate with them? And this is what they, how they, how they communicate? The phone, I can't reach my phones, but they got that phone in front of them. How do we do that? Well, we're still behind in trying to engage with the community. Looking forward, we understand, and I stated that in our budget, policing and security in the private sector are two expensive pieces. But as Sir Robert Peel said, it's measuring what doesn't happen. We, we do this whether it's in the private sector or the public sector for insurance and prevention. Risk management, mitigating these circumstances to prevent that. Here's some of the things that I haven't talked about, but they, they go back to accreditation. To have accreditation and Lexipol, which are two risk management pieces, that's a full-time job. You hear oftentimes I say full-time job. The Fitchburg Police Leadership, like our deputy chief, our lieutenants, which are actually doing commander role, captain position. We have no lieutenants that do shift commander roles. We're wearing a bunch of different hats, both in the sworn position and in civilian position. We have to start figuring out ways to, to move forward and, 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 you know, develop the department on those sides. Growth, we've discussed growth. The police facility, both in our sworn, our professional staff. We gone through decades doing more with less. And there's nothing wrong with doing more with less. We always have to find ways to be efficient. And we're looking at ways like that, of that. But at the end of the day, you still need the body. You need the person to do some of these jobs. There's systems in place. I'll give you some systems, things that we, we're looking at doing for efficiency. Using different technology to help us with dictation and moving some of those people to other areas. Those are just thoughts. There's areas where we can look at, see, okay, if we can't pay for an analyst because it costs $75,000 in benefit and plus benefits, how about a program that may cost $2,000 a month, but it serves the purpose of analytical work that does that automated system? Everything costs money, but how do you look at efficiency? We're not also, we don't, as a law enforcement agency, you don't go and just ask, city, give me more money, give me more money, give me more money. We look for grants. But that's a challenge as well. If you do a federal grant, we're competing with 2,033 mid-sized cities. If we do a state grant, we're competing with 30 other mid-sized cities. If we happen to look for a big one that's three-quarter of a million dollars or bigger, can our finance department even handle that? Because now they're hurting for staffing as well. Big challenges, big challenges. And I'm not just pointing the finger saying, hey, we need the help. It's thinking about the city's growth. How do we grow and what areas do we grow in? So things to think about, challenges. I don't have the answers. And the last one I look, when we talk about finances that I failed to mention is police foundations. Police foundations have been very successful in many cities. We're looking at maybe starting one up in 2023. But that's a task in itself. And if I, we don't have the staff to commit to the streets, I gotta have staff that's going to commit to the foundation to help get that going. Those are challenges. I'm looking forward to doing things like of that nature. So my job is not just to come to the city and say, we need more money. My job is to see how we're going to get money for that organization to get it where we need, both from city and other areas. So this is what a traditional organizational chart looks like from a mid-sized city. As I stated, there's no public information slot that I forgot to add in there. There is no, you, you, you got public information and no accreditation piece, the inspections part. That would be a supervisor or management position. Or for inspections alone, you can do civilian, but to pass it over with internal affairs, early intervention, things of that nature, that's a sworn position. So where do you fit that box in there as, as a person who would do that? Here is risk management. Having, and if you notice, that's a lieutenant position on each shift. That's where you need to grow in a department with approximately 40,000 sworn. Because now you start moving with numbers, the resources take you to where you need management and supervision on each shift. There has to be a leader of authority on each shift. And the planners who control these large areas have to have the time to sit and plan and prepare these, these groups, these bureaus, without having to respond to a call themselves. I have yet to have a meeting with our executive staff without them being called out of the room. How much listening occurs there if they're getting called out to the room? Because we don't have this right here. And there's only two on first shift. And those two are basically given several administrative duties. They're rarely out on the street on the first shift. And they're most of the time, spend their time out doing training and other things that we can get done on the first shift. Which means those people that are in the command level had to fill in those spots. That is, that, that's a difficult, a difficult thing to do. Now, on our civilian side, that's one person handling each and every one of those hats. And the record specialist. The bureau support position, there is no detective sergeant. They're managing the detectives, they're managing the investigations, they're managing communications and all the other areas there. Which it, it's comical. I don't take offense because I know what they're doing. I'm connected to them. But the reality is, we can't even find somebody to put the new pictures of our new officers on the wall, including mine. And we can chuckle about that, but that's where our time consumption is going. Would you rather be doing police work or putting pictures up on the wall? Hence, there haven't been any new pictures there for a couple of years? Give or take? A year? Okay, a year. All right. That's the reality. These are the areas. And I do this and say this because I am going to be a broken record. You ask me two months from now, where do you see the department in five to 10 years? I see it right there. You tell me, ask me a year from later, where do you see the organization? I see it right there. Where do you see it in five years? I see it right there. That's why I'm saying this. It's a lot of thought that goes into this. I came in, as Deputy Chief Leahy is my witness, pre this PowerPoint, I said, here are my talking points. And he kept interrupting me, we got that. I said, no, 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 here are my talking points. Former Chief Brecklin said that already. We're a broken record. I'm repeating, maybe more animated than Deputy Chief, than, than former Chief Brecklin. But a lot of the stuff I said outside, coming into this organization are the same. We're not fibbing here. This is the reality. We have to start taking notice of our Fitchburg Police Department. I'm going to leave you with some of these because people often tell me this. We can't be biased. The police department is like any other department in the city. I disagree with that statement. That's why I put it here. There are very few professions that can compare to law enforcement. Although there's some that are 24, seven, 365 days out of the year, our level of transparency is above none. Our accountability, our expectations, job needs to be continued. We need to continue to promote this law enforcement profession. We don't, one national incident takes it all away. One national incident takes it away. This is a young person's job. It has a low life expectancy rate once you retire. Hence, I retired and I came back because I don't want to die. And it has a high divorce rate. Those are national numbers. High divorce rate. And I can tell you that coming here to Fitchburg, what you as a council, mayor, city administrator, was you as the Police and Fire Commission, and you, the public, have done for me, coming from where I came from, you have been my mental health. There's good people here in the city of Fitchburg. There's good leadership here in the city of Fitchburg, and I thank you for that. I thank you for listening to this presentation. And for all of you, God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, and thank you for everybody else's service, other officers. At this time, I'd like to open it up for discussion, questions from council. Mayor Richardson, go ahead.
Thank you for all that, Chief. Could you speak a little bit to your perspective on some issues that I think are, are in the news a lot? You know, in terms of policing and around things like marijuana enforcement, guns, I know is a big thing in the area right now. Abortion's a big thing and also immigration. I think those are kind of four big ones and kind of your thoughts and perspectives on how you would approach those items?
Yes, I, and I prepared with, with Sir Robert Peel said over 100 years ago. We're impartial, that's number one. Some of these pieces that have come up with abortion, those mandates come not from us, but they come from the Attorney General. If there's a big push, it's going to come from higher than a police chief. I can tell you as far as, so that's the abortion piece. As, as a chief of police, as I'm wearing this uniform and wearing this badge, I don't express opinion pro or against those pieces. We go about enforcement. And our primary focus is reduce crime, fear and disorder. That's not a piece that falls into there. If there's no crime, fear and disorder, if there's no protest, fights, and what I mean by protests, if there's, if it becomes violent or things of that nature where we have to intervene, disorder, that's when it becomes to our attention. But we don't go out there and develop a plan because of something that happened there. We're having another example of that is we communicate as leaders in law enforcement. Being part of mid-sized in the 30 cities, we're hosting the, it's called, for Wisconsin, it's called the Wisconsin Police Executive Group. We'll be hosting our quarterly meeting, our fall/winter quarterly meeting in October here in Fitchburg. Those are things that we discuss with our US attorney and push. As a chief of police where I came from, as a chief of police here, I focus on crime. How is crime impacting us? I'm not going to go on a political agenda to say, this is what we need to do. I, I give you data, I give you facts. And I, you know, I present those to you. Immigration, that's been a constant to a person who's the son of an immigrant. So there's groups that want me to say, we won't work with ICE. We're staying away from ICE. ICE is not allowed in the city of Fitchburg. That's not my decision either. I don't make those decisions. I can tell you that, again, what Sir Robert Peel said is we're here to serve everyone in our community, regardless of that. We don't go around and ask for immigrant status. All right? We don't go evolve and, and get involved in operations with ICE. But I can't tell you with a straight face to say, I can't tell you that we will not work with ICE. They're a law enforcement agency. What I mean by that is if they call us and say, we have to effect an arrest and we need your help. They're a law enforcement agency, it's their warrant, we have to help them. But when we're talking about operations, when we talk about going after people, just assuming somebody isn't here legally, we don't do that. And we're not going to do that. But I just have to show the reality and what people want a chief of police to say in any jurisdiction to say, they're not allowed here. I can't, as, as a person holding this badge sworn to uphold the laws, I can't say that publicly because I'd be contradicting myself. We just don't work in that fashion. With the staffing levels we have, we're not going to work in that fashion. We don't have the time to do that. We're looking at what affects crime. A scenario that might come up, we talk about domestic violence. An individual who has been involved in some serious domestic violence, our, our threat assessment says, you know, what the, what, what this person has done, and these are true stories here in Fitchburg. This person choked out his wife. And our threat assessment shows, she's going to die. He's going to kill her if we put him back together. What are you doing in a situation like that? Right? Those are tools that you have to use. And most often that comes once they go into county jail where their status is discovered. It's not discovered under our part. But those are things that eventually get funneled back. And if that person is here on a status that, you know, in, in, in our nation undocumented and they're all trying to choke out their significant other or their spouse, that's going to be a homicide soon. We have to look at the reality of crime, fear and disorder. Both women and men are equal here. In some other places, that's not so. And that's, that's a true event. You had, the other one was marijuana, marijuana. Marijuana is one thing that I say this. We don't go out specifically enforcing marijuana, but it is against the law. Right? In part of our investigations, if that's a part that, that gets involved, we get involved. What I mean by that is we've had robbery complaints where a person is selling marijuana. They were robbed by the person purchasing marijuana. True, true events. We have to take action on that piece. Marijuana today versus marijuana 30 years ago is much more potent. Marijuana today often has other drugs in it. From fentanyl to, I don't know if they put, they mix it with all kinds of stuff. Cocaine, sometimes you have cocaine in this marijuana. There's a mixture of drugs that are in there that are much more serious. Another piece that I say is, we're not here to dictate whether marijuana is legal or illegal. But if it were to be made legal, my response is, what is our system going to do when you have those? And you do have them currently, the accidents while impaired. It's easy to determine alcohol on a person when they're involved in an accident. When they're under the influence of another intoxicant, it's not so easy to determine that. And even the blood trials take a little longer to identify that drug. So to get the training on identifying those individuals that are driving while impaired under a different narcotic means increased training for us. But this, the, the, the type of drug investigations here, and I'm learning that piece here in Dane County, a lot of that goes, the bigger investigations happen through our drug unit. Our staffing levels right now, I'm pushing more towards a community-oriented police department. Our investigations are going to come from the community, how that directs us to those problems. So I got that one? And was there four? And was there four? Drugs, immigration, and abortion. Oh, the guns. Guns. Here's a piece that I say, and here are some... I brought up NIBANS. We use NIBANS, and currently, right now, I would say it's proactive. One would say it's reactive. We got enough data to put into the system right now to follow up on the guns, casings, and bullets we recovered in the last couple of years. That's what we're working on. I find it, and I am a true believer, wherever we go, a small group of people account for the majority of the crime that occurs in that area. So the people that committed those crimes last year or the year before, if they're still here, we're going to know that when we put these things through the system. And we'll be able to follow up on that before they commit another crime. That's what we've been doing currently. We've been very successful at it. We've been connecting with the U.S. Attorney's Office. And most often, that gun crime, though, believe it or not, is connected with another drug, but it's the gun case that's driving us, not the marijuana. The gun case is what's taking us to the U.S. Attorney's Office. The gun case is what's helping us remove what the problem is in the neighborhood and not go over and over policing neighborhood. So those are ways we're doing how we're utilizing the gun. I like to look at the violence because the gun offenders, you will notice that there's a number of other crimes that they're involved in. From easy one is domestic violence. Drugs are going to play a role, but the gun piece is what I think we all agree we need to work on to get off the streets.
Alder Wheeler, go ahead.
Thanks for your presentation, Chief. The one thing I wanted to ask, you know, we talk about outreach, talk about neighborhood officers. Can you tell me how many neighborhood officers you would need right now?
Well, we have one that started at the beginning of summer, one that started at the end of summer. So the second one has not started. We're currently, I would say, although we have two hires in the academy, I won't count them on paperwork counting, but I won't count them as new until they graduate from the academy. So we're four short. That map that I showed you, what we're trying, what we're getting out on the street, that's putting two people off to be neighborhood officers. So it's very difficult to increase that. I would love to increase it. I see that there's some people from the south end of Pittsburgh. Here's what's important. I've been spending some time on the south end of Pittsburgh. For me, it's mental health. I enjoy you all. Even if you yell at me, I enjoy that piece in the south end. But realistically, what do you need for community outreach down there? I mean, I'm just sitting there, and the sky's the limit on what you can do when we talk about seasonal events that occur there. The combines coming out, you know? How can we help with traffic control? How can we help with messaging these things so that it's safer for, you know, for our farmers and safer for our students? How can we do outreach at the schools for recruiting? We're working on that right now with setting up some time. We have no staffing, so I'm going to try to work on the recruitment with Oregon School District. And they have an event where they're bringing in public... They're bringing in different professions on Wednesdays to talk to a certain group of kids to start recruiting in high school. So staffing levels, I would normally ask a community officer to work on that. I'm going to go out for that. Plus, I want to get to know the people as well. But now you have that. How about the engagement in the south end with the community resource officer? The sky's the limit, but you have to have that staffing.
Okay.
So you can even use them for public information.
And these are full-time officers that are neighborhood officers, not responsible for calls for service?
Correct.
Okay.
The two will happen? Yes.
Okay. Well, the other thing I mentioned, that you mentioned about the health of officers, and you know, when we retire, you know, after 28 years, you know, I've retired. You mentioned officer wellness and safety. I just find that to be very important. Here's an example. Last month and a half, three Madison police officers who retired died. Two, 55, and 62, they died from heart issues. And 63 are old, unknown. So we do, like you said, do not last too long after retiring. So can you give me an application? I think I need to be like you and get back on the force.
Yes, come on board. No, that is true. And that's one thing I don't like to talk about publicly. But one of the reasons why I'm here is really promoting that image and standing up for a lot of friends that I had that died, whether recently retired or on the job due to a number of different things. And it impacts you. I'd be a liar if I told you it doesn't. And I know where my future is, and I hope my future continues to go that way. I'm not going to be in my 60s here with you. I'm going to be somewhere else. But I want to give back as much to a police department like you, a city like you, leadership like you while I'm here and pass on what's been given to me.
We have a question from Alder Herbst. Go ahead, Alder.
Hey, Chief. You know, I do a technical job, and I've been doing it. I'm in my 40th year. And I can tell you, I'm not doing it the same way I am today as I did when I started on June 20, 1983. We've had to implement technology to become more efficient. Otherwise, we'd be out of business. Still doing the same function, but we had to get better using technology. Can you address what are some technology things you can use? I can't accept that, well, we just have to have more bodies. And I'm getting beat up by retired people, you know, as soon as the assessments came out. Can you address how technology maybe can help us? Help you do your job more efficiently?
I fail to emphasize that technology has been the reason why we're bogged down with work. It has an adverse effect. And there's technologies there that can help you. And I'll explain those as well for efficiency pieces. But here's how technology has impacted us. Body cams. How much data does that hold when you have just day-to-day interaction with body cams? Surveillance, ring cameras I spoke about. Internally, our records management system. The requirements for entering data in our records management system is intense. Give you an example. Let's go to 30 years ago, brand-new cop. I do a traffic stop, and I pull over Grandma. Grandma ran the red light. I identify that as Grandma. I'm not even going to ask her for her driver's license. Grandma, you ran the red light. Slow it down, all right? And get on your way. Now I get in my squad car and drive away. I can't do that more so in many departments. I cannot do that type of stop anymore. I got to document it. So now I got to document the plates of the car. I got to run the plates. I got to document Grandma. I got to, in my documentation, I got to include the reason for the stop in this data system. That's technology. I have to put race. I have to put gender. I have to put as much demographics as I can get on that person in this system because so many different areas of oversight want to know if we're doing our stuff disparagingly. So all these data points that I have to manually enter into this new data system makes that 30-second traffic stop into a 20-minute traffic stop because all these different data systems and all these proprietaries where none of them want to share because they all want to sell to government to make money off the government? Now it takes me 20 minutes to put that in all the different systems that I have to put them in. So hence, you want... We have to enter it. So now we have... That's a 20-minute traffic stop. So now that information, I... Now I'm the leader of... Or an investigator for the police department. An incident happens with a particular vehicle. I have to go through all these data systems to pull that, hence the need for an analyst to help you develop all that information and where it's connected to. So data systems, there's plenty of them. Many of them don't talk to each other. Number one, technology with cameras. I believe in body cam. I believe at what, you know, and we're still learning how to use body cam. But body cam's going to benefit the police officer, and it is, much more than the community, especially in affluent communities because we all have bad dates. We all have bad hair dates. We all dress differently at home. And when the police come knocking at your door because you called and that's on camera, it doesn't impact us. It impacts the community. But again, those are things that you have to review. Technology, though, what I'm looking at for efficiency are ways where we can have our staff do other things that are more important, like in that slide I showed, evidence management. Okay? If I can find ways for dictation to be much easier for officers, that's more automated, I can use staff in other areas. I've been researching that piece. But a department that tried it 10 years ago, they went full offline, off-diction. They ended up coming back 50/50 because it's such difficult software. Dragon Speech is what I'm talking about. And Dragon Speech continues to improve, but realistically, it's not there yet. That's an efficiency tool. I talked a little bit, I didn't name the company, but AWS helps you for identifying... You can go, if you dump your data systems into AWS, if you can do that, I'd learn a little bit more about it. If I want to put in there a pink tattoo on the right arm, it will throw all surveillance, videos, pictures of somebody with a video files or somebody with a pink tattoo on their right arm, and I'll help you identify that piece. It's a person, it's a system that takes the place of a person to review this. On the low end, that's $2,000 a month. But a person that you're paying versus benefits, maybe $75,000 a year versus, what do we say, $24,000 on the low end a year to have a system like this? So we are looking for efficiency. It's just very difficult when you talk about technology. And that's... I'll say it in my terms, it's a hustle. I want to sell you my product, and I want to keep you coming to buy my product. So the challenge when you come in with all these different efficient technology pieces is how are they all going to communicate? That's the hard part.
We have another question from Alder Gerhart. Go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks, Chief, for the presentation. It was really interesting. I actually have a lot of questions, and I probably cannot ask all of them. So I was wondering if, just as a preference, could I follow up with some questions written? And have you answered them later at a later date?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great. And then I'll start with one, although I do have a couple, but I'll let other people ask first. But I want to follow up on the mayor's question about the abortion, the criminal abortion ban from 1849. I've been reading a lot about this. It's something that I'm interested in. And I know that it's the law that 1849 is generating a lot of fear in the community, both the fact that it exists. And also, from what I've read, it's also unclear if a law from 1849 can be enforced, something that hasn't been enforced for over 50 years. So there is kind of confusion in terms of what the law is. And a lot of communities around Wisconsin are clarifying. How... Obviously, we cannot overturn a law internally in the city. But we can clarify how the police officers will handle cases related to that state statute. Are you open to having a discussion about how... But clarifying for the public how that will be dealt with within the department?
Absolutely. And that's one thing that realistically, it doesn't really impact us as the Pittsburgh Police Department. And that's the most important piece because for that to get translated and see what's going to happen and what's not going to happen and how it's going to be enforced doesn't come from us as much as it comes from the Attorney General. So a lot of these questions, we'll entertain them and we'll respond. But a lot of it is you might want to defer to the Attorney General because they're the ones that are really going to say, "We really shouldn't be touching this," or "This is something if you're going to..." You know, if you have a clinic, and that's most often when that question is going to happen, we don't have a clinic in the city of Pittsburgh that I'm aware of. So if we don't have a clinic, it really doesn't impact the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay. So you...
That's one where I really haven't put a lot, any thought into it because it doesn't really impact us.
Got it. That's good to know. I do think it's important to clarify because I think there's a lot of confusion. And like I said, confusion breeds a lot of fear. And I think it would be good to clear... There's a lot of communities that are clarifying in very particular ways. And I would be interested in having that conversation with you if you're open to it.
Absolutely. Or even if you have, and I keep saying this. We want to really be visible in your community, everyone's community. A meeting in your neighborhood, I'd love to come to and address them in your, you know, in your neighborhood, your homes. That's, for me, I enjoy going out to the different neighborhoods, getting to know the different residents, and answering some of those questions.
Is there additional questions for the Chief? Yes, Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
So thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I have a question regarding your staffing proposal. You mentioned that a city of... We are way below the average officer for 1,000 people population. So my question to you, because you know our budget is very limited for how many new positions we can, you know, approve in each budget cycle. So what is your proposal to the city about your staffing plan for the future? Because you have practically mentioned that you are understaffed. We are way below the average, the national average compared to other municipalities. So looking at, you know, that the resources are very thin in our budget, also looking that the police department take more than one-third of our city budget. So what is your proposal for, you know, for that, for hiring new police officers with so many limitations?
I had a hard time hearing, but it's a... I think you... I had a hard time hearing you, ma'am. So I'm going to reiterate, just... You had two questions. With a low city budget, how are we going to continue with our staffing? Is that one question?
Yeah, because my question to you is how is your staffing plan for the future when, you know, when, you know, like... You are, if I do the math, you know, with the number that you presented, you will need, you are under 15 sworn officer right now. So what is your staffing proposal to the city and to the council for future year or how achieve or reduce our staff?
Yes. Reiterating, your staffing plan, over 40,000 people, you're now going to a staffing of over 70 sworn officers. All right? And we're at 54. So how do we do that? Well, that's explaining this to the city. What do we do? Explaining this to the community. To get what we need to run a police department that's going to be community-oriented, this is what we need. But in addition to that, I mentioned it in my presentation, is we also look at other ways through grants. They're very competitive, but we look for grants. And we also are trying to get a foundation going to help us with other areas. Now foundations aren't going to help with staffing, but foundations can help with other areas. The building of a police station, foundations can help with some of the other material things that the police department will need. But that still helps them when we're looking for staffing. But this is a staffing piece. As leadership for the city, we have to understand how we're going to staff our city resources. And I'm here to advocate for the police department. And I'm going to advocate for the police department. But even working with human resources, that's 1.5 people. And I think I use human resources every day. Our department uses resource, human resource every day. We have to take an honest look at our city resources and how do we grow when the city is growing? Because it's not going to stop growing the way things are going out through our nation. So I don't think it's just for me to think about how we're going to do it. It's for us together jointly as a team, work and say, "How do we grow for the city needs?" I don't have that answer for you. I can tell you where I'm looking for, explain it to you what our needs are, and where the places I'm going to go to see what I can get for our organization.
Randy?
Yes, Alder Wheeler, if you have a question.
Yeah, Chief. You and I talked about the six pillars on the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. Is there a way you can get that document out to the public by putting it on your website? Because I like the document because I think it explains exactly what you're talking about, especially when it comes to technology, training, wellness, policy and oversight, and building trust and legitimacy. And I think that document will actually show the public what it takes to actually get this police department to where I think it should be.
But we'll do... Thank you. We'll put that on our website. And we'll also, we can also include, you know, the nine principles in policing, which we're also trying to meet with those pillars.
Yes, Alder Gerhart.
One thing that I had a chance, when I toured the department with you about a month ago, I had a chance to meet with the social worker. That's halftime, senior center, halftime with the police department. And I'm curious, and obviously, she's new, so, and that's a new position. And I don't think you have to answer this right now. But I'd be interested at some point getting a report from you about how that has gone. And... some point getting a report from you about how that has gone and, and if you see a, a room in the future for additional social work support for the department?
Yes, and, uh, yes, and we, uh, we also have to provide that for the Police and Fire Commission. They're also interested in the duties of the social work. Being it's the first year, we do have data, uh, points that, that we're entering, uh, for, just to see how it works out. We won't have anything to compare it, but we're hoping at the end, at the end of the year, we can at least present, uh, what, uh, that social worker has done.
Great. I have one more.
Go ahead.
Uh, and, and this obviously is going to be a longer conversation, but, but you all know that I'm, I'm very passionate about electric and hybrid vehicles. And we've talked a little bit about potentially incorporating that with the police department sometime in the future. I also see that as a really great way to save budget. You know, maybe we can divert some of the budget away from, from gas and, and move it towards something like personnel. Um, one of the things I noticed when I was on the ride along was how much idling time, more idling time than I, than I imagined with, uh, having to keep the vehicle running so that you didn't sign out of the computers and, because the whole login for all the different websites is, is, is time consuming and you don't want to log out. Makes perfect sense. Um, but I do wonder if there's some, uh, kind of in-between solution where it's a backup battery for those systems so that they don't shut down, but you can turn off the gas engine? I don't know if that exists. It's something that I would like to do some research on and maybe if someone in the department is willing to kind of work with me on that, I'd be interested in having, obviously, I'm not an expert in this, so I, I want that feedback as I, as I look into that. But I just wanted to bring it up as something that I noticed and that I wondered if there's some, um, some communities innovating on that. And if not, maybe we can, maybe we can innovate on it ourselves, so.
Yeah, just to reiterate, some of our conversations is the impact of gas versus electric in the vehicles is, uh, really putting a, a, a good comparison. I, um, on this piece, I'm not really technology savvy, so I asked, um, I'll, I'll tell you who I asked. I asked my son, he's, uh, uh, trying to be a mechanical engineer and, uh, university. So I asked him, hey, do some research for me on electric versus gas and what it takes. And, uh, I mean, ask some of the, 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 uh, your, your professors, your, your instructors that you're dealing with. And, uh, although it's something we, we like to move forward to, and I'm not just saying this as a negative, there's a lot of thought that goes into it and a lot of cost that goes into it, uh, on, on the front end to get these things going. So again, those are things where we really have to do, pull data, pull research and identify that. When we talk about a new building, the, the different outlets that you're going to need for, for, for charging, if you go that route, uh, what cars, and I think we talked about current vehicles that are electric in nor, in, in Midwest Wisconsin here with the cold weather in the winter, for what we utilize them, their batteries are not going to last out there. We don't have a place where you can go in and warm up. We don't have a garage, uh, uh, the charging stations, the batteries that, uh, lose a lot more life in the, in the winter versus the summer. Things to take into consideration. Great ideas, but are we there yet? And that's kind of the, the findings that my son was, uh, looking and researching. Great ideas, but we're not there yet. That doesn't mean we, we stop. We're not there yet. That means you continue to keep that open mind to see when are we going to be there yet and at what time do we start doing those?
Very good. Uh, Chief, thank you again, given the, the, the time and we have another hour presentation. Uh, I would encourage all council members, if you have additional questions, to forward them on to the chief and, uh, and, uh, look for a response. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your officers, uh, the service, their service. We do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Very good. Have a good evening.
You as well.
We will move on to our, uh, next agenda item, which is, uh, six B. And that's a review of twenty twenty-three Public Works projects. And, uh, the Director of Public Works, Bill Balky, will present. And Bill is online, so, uh, Bill, are you, are you, uh, ready or shall we take a recess?
Um, it's up to you. Chad told me that I had to be done by nine, so I can talk-
I, I would move, we take a five-minute recess.
All right. I've been mo, uh, I have a motion to, uh, recess for, for five minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. So we will recess for five minutes and reconvene. All right. Very good. We will reconvene the Community Hall Meeting of Wednesday, August twenty-fourth. And prior to, uh, recess, I did introduce, uh, Bill Balky, our Director of Public Works. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Bill. Go ahead. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, I'll make this brief, although we've got quite a bit going on in Pittsburgh in twenty twenty-three for construction. Uh, just to kind of walk you through things, uh, for tonight, I will walk you through the resurfacing program, which encompasses about four miles of, of streets that we're going to be resurfacing. Uh, that is com, uh, combined two-year project, uh, of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three together. And then, uh, we're adding in about two miles of ARPA projects, uh, for resurfacing as well. So we'll walk through that, then I'll go into the other major construction projects. I've got a map that I'll just kind of walk you through going from the west side to the east side and, uh, all the different projects that we've got going on with that. So I'll, I'll try to be brief and then we can just ask questions as we go along, uh, as we go through each group of projects. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, just feel free to bring those up at the time. All right. So let me share my screen quickly here with, uh, our first map of the resurfacing projects. Um, this encompasses about four miles of streets around the city of Pittsburgh. Uh, and as I indicated, there are projects in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. There's forty-seven segments of roadway that we're looking at, uh, improving through resurfacing. And a lot of the, the streets that have curb and gutter within them will have an assessment associated with them. So, um, we're trying to lock those streets in for sure to get those done. And then depending on our budget, uh, we've also got areas in the rural areas, uh, of Pittsburgh, uh, Gold's Court, uh, you know, these areas down here in southern Pittsburgh that don't have any curb and gutter, that, uh, depending on how much budget we have, uh, we, we can get those, those roads in. Uh, let me just do another share here quickly, uh, with the, with our, with a spreadsheet that I have. It kind of indicates the different streets. I could, I can share this, um, with everyone, but let me just do the share again. It didn't take. Spreadsheet, here we go. Um, the blue are the areas that we're, we're going to do, uh, next year for sure. And, uh, we're, we're going to be doing those streets, uh, for twenty twenty-three. The orange is, uh, are the streets that don't have curb and gutter that, uh, we would like to get done. And then the, the, the light yellow ones are kind of budget dependent, you know, depending on what our, um, our budget comes in with, uh, with the resurfacing prices. We had, we estimated it high. We're hoping we can get all of those into the program next year. But if, if bid prices come in extremely high, we may not be able to do some of those, um, on the lower list. All right. Share, stop that share and sharing back to the other projects that we've got. This is a map that shows our, our ARPA streets, uh, and those are the orange streets that are indicated on the map here. So we've, we've got a, a lot of the area up here, uh, north of Crescent, uh, Crescent Road, uh, west of Seminole. And then, uh, we also have another area of street over here on the east side of Pittsburgh in the Rimrock Road area. Uh, and those are the, the ones that are the, in the qualified census districts, uh, as the low and moderate income areas, uh, in the, the census maps. So those are the areas that are qualified for that. It's a separate project that we're going to be running for this, uh, uh, due to the funding requirements for the federal funds. And, uh, we're planning on doing those streets as well in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the one that was added by council, uh, with the, the budget amendments, uh, or the, the CIP amendments was the Wayland Road bike lanes. So, uh, we will be filling in all of the areas that don't have bike lanes between Fish Atrey Road and Fitzroona Road, uh, for, uh, adding those bike lanes in as well. And those are ARPA qualified funds that will be used for that project. Um, we'll roll on to the major projects that we have going on this year and next year. Um, and that would be the ones that are marked in red. And that would be over here on the west side of town, uh, Lacy Road between Seminole Highway and Fitzroona Road. This, this project along with the roundabout will be constructed in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're planning on bidding that out, uh, late fall, winter this year. Uh, utilities getting in, doing their relocates, uh, as soon as we get those cleared with right-of-way acquisition. Uh, that should happen within the next two months. And then we do have some tree clearing. We had let a contract earlier this year along Lacy Road to do the tree clearing in advance of the, um, the road. And that, that was done, uh, in order to facilitate construction around some of the, uh, the natural habit or the, um, I think it was the brown bats that were out there that we had to get in there before they started roosting. Um, and that was before June. So we're going to be doing that this fall yet and then, uh, construction starting in the spring of twenty twenty-three for that project. Uh, one of the other projects that we have is a new well coming in at, uh, just in the Stoner Prairie area. That's north of Lacy Road, east of Seminole Highway. Uh, that new well will, uh, start construction probably mid-summer to fall. Uh, it's going to be designed, uh, this fall into summer, so, um, we can start, uh, so we can serve this area better with water, um, to our system. And then up here at, uh, the intersection of, uh, Red Arrow and, uh, and, uh, in Crescent is, uh, uh, we're doing the feasibility study up there now, uh, for the stormwater improvements for that area. And then we're going to be doing some, uh, the design of that next year and then construction in twenty twenty-four, I believe, yeah. Uh, next summer, we're also on McKee Road, uh, in between Osmondson and, uh, Triverton Pike is, uh, or maybe that's Yarmouth Greenway. I can't remember. It's over there. Uh, in, in that, on McKee Road, we are doing a water main replacement. Uh, we've had, uh, it's from the water tower down to the east. Uh, we've had many water main breaks in that area due to the growth of soils of the water main. So, uh, our staff designed that project, uh, this, this summer and we're going to bid that out next year along with the water main projects. Uh, we have several water main projects, uh, that are planned in the, um, in the ARPA areas, uh, for replacement as well as some of the resurfacing projects. So we'll be, be, bidding that all out together, uh, concurrently. Down here at the intersection of, uh, Charleston and East Sherrill is some stormwater improvements that we're making to that, that intersection. Uh, there's flooding that occurs at that intersection and then one to the east. So, uh, we're, we'll be doing that storm. Uh, we've bid it out. Uh, it's coming through council for approval now. And, um, we are going to be, uh, doing the construction of that if, uh, council approves the project, uh, the bidding or the construction of that, um, next year in twenty twenty-three. We are going to try to get the ditching done this year and then the, the piping under the road next year. Um, we've noticed that, uh, quite a few of the projects that we've been bidding, they've had some supply chain issues with, um, getting steel, uh, reinforcement meshing, concrete, trucking, things like that where, um, we just can't get the pipe fast enough. And so there's been some delays with, with some of the projects that we'd like to get going started sooner than later, but unfortunately, uh, due to those constraints, uh, they've been put off and, and, and we're feeling that the ramifications of that. Um, yeah, heading over to, uh, South Sain Road, we do have that, uh, under contract currently. The, the inters, we, again, having some issues with supply chain and with utility relocations on this one, uh, but we're trying to work with a contractor to see what we can get done this year. Um, we need to try to get the, the intersection at East Sherrill and Sain Road opened up as soon as possible and due to the development that's occurring in the area. And, uh, we're working on plans with contractor now to, to minimize the impacts to that area, uh, and try to get as much done this year as we can. Um, it's not as much as we would like to, but, uh, at least get that intersection open to traffic, uh, on East Sherrill Parkway. So we're working with the contractor to get that, uh, up and running this year. Um, they, they should be starting toward the end of August, beginning of September, uh, with that project and then they'll run through November fifteenth, uh, as a completion date. Uh, it is a two-part project. Um, so we will be doing the remainder of Sain Road down to Lacy Road or down to Aurora and then Lacy Road from, uh, Sain Road to the roundabout next year. So we've got that project as well, uh, for coming up in twenty twenty-four. So it's a two-part project. We'll go through the end of the year this year and then starting up in the spring next year for the Lacy Road part of it, uh, and then down to Aurora. The, uh, the other, uh, project that we have coming forward is, um, associated with the, the area south of Lacy Road is, is in the Hartong area, uh, for that development and that Ted, that was just recently approved. We have to extend the sanitary sewer interceptor and that's the blue line through there, um, into that development in order for them to develop the east partial, east, eastern portion of their development. Uh, so that's a, uh, one of our utility projects that we have going on. Uh, up here, uh, off of Herman Road or, I'm sorry, West Clayton, uh, near Herman Road, I guess I should take this guy and move it a little bit more up here, um, is a, is a pond, uh, that we are constructing in order for the development of the Nine Springs Platte, the seventh addition to develop. In order for them to develop, their water drains up to this area and we need to install this pond, uh, as part of the construction of any development that happens in this area. Um, and we're doing that in advance of the development. All of the, the, the expenses for the pond construction and purchase of the land will be assessed back to the contributing drainage area. So, uh, each of those parcels that drain into there will receive, um, an invoice or bill for their, uh, contribution to that stormwater infrastructure improvements. Uh, continuing to the west a little bit more, um, we've got a water tower planned for the, uh, the northeast, inner northeast area. Um, uh, that would be located at the intersection of, uh, Highway fourteen and Lacy Road. Uh, we're probably going to get that designed this year or in twenty twenty-three with construction in twenty-four. It may happen late in twenty-four, uh, depending on how we structure the contract for design. Uh, one other, uh, utility project that we have coming in up on, off of Highway MM near McCoy Road is, uh, the McCoy Interceptor. We have to run this interceptor sewer, uh, south of Bayton Road so that the, uh, the Nine Springs or Royal Capital Developments, uh, the Fosside property, uh, can develop their, their entire, uh, property for development there. The, uh, lighter green, uh, areas that I have sporadically throughout the, the, the map here are, are large-scale subdivision developments that are, uh, under review or will be reviewed or in some sort of construction in twenty twenty-three. From east to west, I guess if I go, go from west to east again, uh, we've got the Payne and Dolan area, uh, there, there was a preliminary plat that came through or concept development plan that came through on that one. Uh, that one's moving forward. That we'll probably see some construction on that later in twenty-three. We've got, uh, the, the, um, High Ridge, High, Highfield Reserve area. I think that's Highfield Reserve, uh, uh, under development by David Fahey. That's, uh, um, got five different phases for construction. Uh, we're seeing phase one A and one B currently under construction. So likely we'll see, uh, a two or three, maybe both, coming in, coming in next year depending on development. We've also got, uh, an area just to the north of there, off of Lacy Road for the, the Pittsburgh Townhomes, uh, that's going to be starting construction this year and finishing up next year. Uh, as we go up to, uh, Traceway Drive, there's a large development there that requires some public improvements, uh, that we'll be overseeing up there, uh, for the apartments up there. And then up, uh, we've got Ochala, uh, just to the north of there, off of Index, uh, several apartment buildings, again, with some public infrastructure up there. There's a, uh, another development, uh, that's in the middle of the, um, off of, uh, East Sherrill Parkway between Sunflower and, I can't remember the other road that's over there. But basically, uh, it's a, we've got a public water main system that needs to be installed through that development. Uh, we'll be completing the design of, uh, Sain Road to the north up through McCoy, uh, through that intersection there in twenty-three for construction in twenty-four. The Nine Springs Development Platte is coming through- The Nine Springs Development Platte uh, is coming through council right now uh, for approval and we'll likely see some construction on that in twenty twenty-three. Uh, as I mentioned, the Hartong development, they would like to try to get started uh, on some of the major roads this year, completing the construction next year for the infrastructure to get that going. Terre Vessa also, um, we can expect probably another phase of that to at least come through the divi- design uh, review process. Uh, maybe some construction of that. And then we're working with the Royal Capital Group uh, for the development of their property. It's called Nine Springs as well. But uh, uh, for the Fossil Development up there. So that in a nutshell is uh, what we've got going on. Uh, we've also got a few stormwater projects that are going on uh, currently in design that we're working through um, some s- uh, stormwater dredging. Some uh, Curry Court is another one that uh, we have in the budget for twenty twenty-three. And what we're going to do with this one is uh, with, with uh, with the staff leaving early or late in twenty-two, twenty-one, actually. Um, the project pretty much sat and we, we didn't have, you know, a real good conclusion as to what we wanted to do there. So we're kind of reviving this project one more time. Um, we're going to have another public informational meeting with the neighborhood. Uh, lay out what the options are, get a clear sense of direction of what we can and cannot do or what we want to do there. Um, and then, you know, we'll have a better understanding of that for twenty-three when we uh, go forward. So it could range anywheres from we're just going to be doing a resurfacing of Curry Court. We're not going to do anything with stormwater. To let's take a look, a, a better look and, and see what we can do with stormwater. Essentially what we found with uh, the results of this, just being pretty blunt is um, it won't solve the flooding problem. Um, it'll reduce the amount of time that is flooding, but the water will still get into the, the, the properties that are there and it might just be for a little bit less time, but the results are still the same. So we want to have that, you know, frank discussion and open discussion with that. And, and see where we stand with that, with the property owners and with the council as well. So that's it in a nutshell, along with uh, upgrading some streetlights. Uh, Fitchrona, Lacy, Dinesbit. Um, that's another major construction project that we have. We received a grant for it. But the town of uh, Verona can't afford to, to uh, pay their fair share. So we're having discussions with them over the next couple of months to determine what they can and cannot do. We'll come back to council with uh, with their input and, and recommendations on how we want to move forward with this grant. But uh, the grant will pay for up to two point, I think eight, two point eight or two point four million dollars of the project, which is a sizable uh, amount. But when we go in for the match uh, from the town of Verona, it's, it's just not there yet. So that's something that we're trying to work through over the next couple of months. We did get a grant for some bus stop improvements from the MPO. Uh, so they'll pay for eighty percent of the, the bus improvements uh, that we're going to be, need for the, the metro redesign coming up in twenty, later twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, and I mentioned the bike lanes on uh, Wayland Road. Oh, it's got the building improvements too. Um, the, the library chiller, we're going to be uh, replacing that next year in twenty-three. Uh, we've got the final design coming out and we'll be bidding that out pretty soon. Um, and install in twenty-three. Uh, we've got the hub design uh, ongoing right now. And that will be ready for uh, construction in twenty-three. And then we've also got the, we'll probably have some involvement with the police department uh, with their uh, design input uh, through, for that project. That's uh, yeah, that's Public Works in a nutshell. Five minutes over.
For, very good, Bill. Uh, I'll start out, start out with the questions uh, or one comment on Curry Court. Please uh, keep uh, Alder Wheeler and myself uh, looped in on uh, public hearings. You know, we, we, we've both have been very actively involved with, with, with the neighborhood, Curry Court, Sain Road, that particular area because of the flooding and we'd like to continue as well. So uh, we'd like to continue to be engaged with, with the neighbors, uh, that particular neighborhood. Um,
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, we, I think that's one of the first meetings that we'd like to have is probably with you and Alder Wheeler, just to uh, with new, the, the new staff, just gathering information as to where, where your perception was we left things. So definitely we'll be reaching out to you for that.
Yeah, and, and I would make it clear that it's just gathering information at this point. Um, I know there's some, you know, some strong opinions and um, I don't want anybody worked up thinking that we're moving forward with a project at this point in time. It's just really just gathering information. So. Um, one other question, um, you mentioned early on in the, the road resurfacing uh, assessments. Now, the assessment itself, there, i- if I remember correctly, at least in the past, um, is primarily if there's curb replacement, curb and gutter. Is, is that, is that, is that true still? For a road resurface?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yeah, the, the current policy is, is uh, we've got a restriction on how much frontage. Uh, there's a maximum frontage and it's also paid for, I think it's fifty percent by the city.
Sure, sure. And so that hasn't changed in, in years past, okay?
Correct.
And then the other question I have is uh, you mentioned a well and I, I'm a, under the impression that's probably Stoner Prairie. Uh, the far left.
Yep.
Yes. And there, there's been lots of conversation, talk about combining restrooms with that particular well and the construction. Um, I'm, c- can you confirm that? And we, we're still moving forward in that direction or at least that thought?
Yes, um, we haven't uh, gotten into the design of it, but we do have the concepts and uh, input from the neighborhood group there that what they would like to see in the facility and we'll do our best to try to accommodate that.
Very good. So the, the, the neighborhood uh, is, is fully engaged. Very good. Thank you. Uh, let me open up to other questions from other council members. Uh, Alder Herbst, go ahead.
Bill, the uh, um, both of those uh, sanitary interceptors to develop those areas, those are both, I believe those are both accessible, you know, fully accessible to those areas. But uh, you got a sense of how deep those are? You know, are these ones that we're going to have to put in thirty feet deep or um, you know, have you, have you looked at it at all yet?
Um, yeah, the, the one that runs along McCoy there, that one is not a, a very deep one. I think it's between seventeen and twenty-three feet. Uh, there is a portion of uh, actually, the, the, the one that runs through Hartong is pretty shallow because it runs along the creek. So I think, I don't think we're going to have no super deep um, sewers there.
I, I have one other thing. If um, there's a court in my neighborhood, Petersburg Court that is in very rough shape. And when I look on the plan, it shows, you know, ten years that uh, something would be done. I, I'm not sure much will be left, left of it in ten years. Can you, uh, when you get a chance, can you s- see him? Am I correct? I think it, I think our, our resurfacing plan shows it in ten years and maybe you want to take a look at it. I'm not sure it can wait that long, but thank you.
Yeah, just uh, to let you know, it, we, we only put the roads in there that we know for sure, like within two years. And that one could be a year three road or, or four road. Uh, it, we just, you know, depending on the, the prices and the length that we can get in in a year uh, that we grab streets that fit in. And so we don't like to, you know, advertise, you know, that we're, we're, we're doing something when, and just keep kicking it down the road uh, because we didn't have the budget to do it or it didn't make sense to do it at the time. So we just generally just say, yeah, these are roads that are in the tenure. It could be, like I said, year three or four or it could be later. I, but we can get back to you on that one.
Thank you for the explanation.
Uh, additional questions? Yes, Alder Roda Frada.
Yes, Bill. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, it is great. Um, so my question, I have a couple of question. One is um, you know, like uh, um, for example, with the shared ride uh, project, stormwater project, you know, that is coming, it's going to come through uh, council for approval. Those estimate were very, very low compared to the actual, you know, bid. So how can we uh, for future project, how we can estimate those engineer costs more closely to real, you know, uh, to actual, you know, because usually we, the issue is sometime we budget or we add in the CIP for an amount and then when it comes for completion of it, this number could be, you know, way more, you know, I mean, like thirty, forty percent. Um, so how we can, my question is for future projects, so we have, we can get, have a better estimate. What are the things that we can do to to those numbers that are not so, the gap is not so big, you know what I mean? When, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. Um, and, and it is kind of a magic, you know, a magic ball. It's, it's hard to say exactly what contractors are available at the time for bidding, uh, what materials are available, um, how fast you're asking them to do the project. Uh, there, there's so many variables in there and we, we do try to estimate, you know, higher. Um, and in this case, we, we estimated twenty percent higher. Uh, even at our engineer's estimate was high and it still came in quite a bit higher. Um, and, and we are seeing that across the board and, and, you know, not only Fitchburg, but you know, in other municipalities as well that they're coming in twenty, thirty, forty percent higher than our, the estimates that they, that they're putting out as well. Um, it's really hard to say what we can do to estimate. We could put a huge number on it uh, to start with, but I don't know if that's realistic, you know, for budgeting purposes either.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah, I understand that, but it's kind of, you know, because now, you know, this project that we promised to be nables uh, that we are going to do it and then you know, there is a possibility that council say, no, this bid is too high, you know what I mean? So that one is very concerning, you know what I mean? So um, my other question to you is about staffing. Do you feel that you have enough on your staffing at Public Works Department to do all these projects? You know, how many overtime hours are put in your people? Are we are getting a little burnt out? Because, you know, it, it's incredible amount of project that you have for next year. And my concern is, you know, do you have enough people to do that? You know, how is the well-being of the staffing in your group, you know, to handle all these projects?
Right. Uh, that's a good question as well. Um, I, I think that we have to look at doing things a little bit differently. Uh, we, we can't just, we need to ask for help and what we need to, what can we reasonably give up in order to accomplish what we need to get done for the year? So that, I think that's the, the approach that we're taking right now is um, what areas can we get assistance with? Like, what can we consult with? Uh, use consulting services instead of staff time, um, just so that we don't get that burnout uh, of all these projects going forward.
Yes, uh, we, Alder Gerhart, you have a question. Go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation, Bill. It's extraordinary how much is on the horizon over the next couple of years. Uh, and I appreciate the kind of the succinct presentation. It's really helpful. The one question I have is, are there uh, state grants or federal grants that are outstanding that would support any of these projects? Or is what you mentioned that has grant funding the, the only things that are on the table?
Uh, no, um, we, we were asked to go out and try to get some grants uh, throughout the community uh, for different things, stormwater, roads. And a lot of these projects that uh, we did receive grant funding for is, are pushing the, the timelines and deadlines that we have to try to get things done. So it was, it was kind of of a double-edged sword. It's great to get the extra money, but you know, it means more work to try to get it done. Um, and so we are looking at a combination of staff and consulting to get the work done. And we're using some of that grant funding to do that. Um, so uh, yes, I guess, you know, we, we are using some grant funding to, to help us out and uh, and to, you know, fund these projects uh, to get them completed.
Thanks.
All right, very good. Uh, additional questions? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Administrator Chad Brecklin has questions.
Bill, I just want to thank you obviously and, and share with the, the group here that you were on vacation this week and I appreciate you coming in uh, tonight to take care of this presentation on short notice. Uh, so thank you for that. And uh, I also just want to uh, reiterate to the council that you saw two department heads uh, this evening present uh, on updates in their particular departments. And I hope it was abundantly uh, evident uh, the amount of uh, work that is available in this community. Uh, be it from a public safety perspective or from, in this case, a public works perspective. And uh, what I can say, having moved into this position in the last thirteen months, I had some suspicions that other departments were as uh, overtaxed, so to speak, uh, or overcapacity as a police department. And uh, I've often felt that the engineering and public works department was, was one of those departments among others. And uh, again, over the last thirteen months, uh, those suspicions have been confirmed and then some. And that's not just those two departments. That's uh, more or less throughout every single department in City Hall. Uh, without, I, I, I'm going to, I'm a bit on my soapbox here, but without the uh, dedication and commitment of our staff throughout all of the departments. Um, I get that some things take longer than we would like them to, to take to get done, but uh, quite honestly, folks are, are working as, as hard as they can, as fast as they can. And uh, trying to be as efficient as they can with the tools and the resources that they have available. But uh, capacity is, is a clear, clear challenge uh, just in providing the existing services that we have here in, in the community. So uh, please uh, please reach out to me. Please reach out to department heads. Uh, if you have any questions about operations, uh, about projects, uh, we certainly want to uh, be a partner with you uh, and, and uh, getting our projects taken care of uh, throughout the community. And uh, we know that you folks all have uh, great connections with your constituents and we always are interested in hearing what your constituents have to say.
All right, uh, Mayor Richardson, you had a question? Would you?
Yeah, just, you know, I couldn't agree more with what Chad said. The reality is that every one of our departments could use more resources. You know, that's one of the things I've tried to do is add positions and we've done that. We've impacted just about every department. Been adding more resources and more positions. We could probably, Chad, add forty positions in the city without blinking an eye and we, to, you really get to where we need to be when you look at the big needs in police department, fire department, public works, parks. And then you get the, some of the back level stuff like finance, you know, and other departments besides. There's a lot of needs and we're not going to be able to add ten positions this year. I can tell you that. But we sure could use ten positions or more. So it's a constant challenge and struggle and with the handcuffs that we have because of the the people down at State Capitol, that's just kind of the world that we live in.
Alder Wheeler, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, from Chief Morales. Um, we heard about the Pierce Park Program that the police department has and I'm just wondering, what do we have for our city employees outside of the police department to make sure their health and wellness is also taken care of?
Yeah, absolutely. And that peer support program is actually joint with our fire department and our, our Petroni EMS. And uh, they do uh, make their services available throughout ci- the city as well as really regionally. Anytime there's some sort of uh, situation that, that might uh, warrant some regional involvement. We do have an employee assistance program uh, available as well. Uh, all of our department heads are aware of that uh, program and uh, you know, just those regular check-ins are important with, with our, our people and uh, making sure that they're doing okay and that they're aware of those resources. So um, you know, they're available. How often they're utilized is always, you know, another, another question that's sometimes not easily answered.
Very good. Yes, Alder Roda Frada, go ahead.
Yeah, so uh, I want to make up, you know, a comment or recommendation is sometime, you know, we others, we push for project that we want to do it right away. So maybe, you know, it would be great deal. You say, okay, guys, we can do it, but you know, I don't have the people right now. I don't have the staff, you know? Maybe we need to prioritize project, you know, and, and do a better planning because um, I think uh, sometime we are, you know, like next year, we had two road project that are huge, you know what I mean? So I s- I know that there are some constraint with the grant money that we receive that it had to be done in a certain time, but also I think we need to, as, as a elected official sometime, we need to, you know, take a look and, and determine, you know, do we have the capacity to do this project right now? Or we can wait one year or two year to do it because, you know, we don't want to put too much pressure in the, a capacity, staff level, resources, you know, um, you know, we don't want to put too much pressure in the, uh, capacity, staff level, resources, you know, um, because like, you know, like, uh, uh, the Wheeler mentioned, you know, we need to keep track, uh, we need to keep also, uh, the well-being of our employees too, you know, and it's more than, more, even more now because, you know, the scarcity of a good employees and uh, in the ma- in the labor markets, you know, how to retain, you know, our employees. So I think we need to be more, um, uh, to have a better consideration when we propose this big project and determine if we have all the resources and capacity in place to do it in the time that we want to do it. So that's it.
All right, I see no additional questions. Uh, Bill, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very, uh, informative and, um, I also want to thank you for coming in on your, uh, from your vacation. Thank you. Have a good evening. Uh, moving on to, uh, item seven of our agenda announcements. The next committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Submoved.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned. The ayes have it. Uh, motion carries. We are adjourned at nine twenty-two.